Support for Carolina Business Review provided by Grant Thornton. Operating in more than 100 countries, our tax audit and advisory professionals specialize in helping companies unlock their growth potential. Blue Cross and Blue Shield of South Carolina, where health care is changing for the better. Find out how at ahealthysc.tv. And by Sunoco, a global manufacturer of consumer and industrial packaging products and provider of packaging services with more than 300 operations in 35 countries.
Well, you won't find much disagreement that getting our education system right is, if not the most important issue, certainly one of the top three that faces the Carolinas. The very broad and effusive topic of education policy is and has been at the center of our region's debate for a long time. It is not going away, and it's just not a recent phenomenon of partisan bickering. Welcome again to the most widely watched source for Carolina business and public policy. I'm Chris William for more than 20 -- geez, guys. I promise I was not drinking heavily before this program. Let me just -- yeah.
Support for Carolina Business Review provided by Grant Thornton. Operating in more than 100 countries, our tax audit and advisory professionals specialize in helping companies unlock their growth potential. Blue Cross and Blue Shield of South Carolina, where health care is changing for the better. Find out how at ahealthysc.tv. And by Sunoco, a global manufacturer of consumer and industrial packaging products and provider of packaging services with more than 300 operations in 35 countries.
You won't find much disagreement that getting our education system right is, if not the most important issue, certainly one of the top three that faces the Carolinas. The very broad and effusive topic of education policy is and has been at the center of our region's debate for a long time, and it's not going away, and it's just not a recent phenomenon of partisan bickering. Welcome again to the most widely watched source for Carolina business and public policy. I'm Chris William, and this time we will drill down into where the contemporary tides of education policy and opinion are taking us. But also, how do we really find the common ground for agreement and do what needs to be done to enhance the Carolinas' competitiveness in development and social capital? Joining our group discussion later is Bill Kobe, chief of North Carolina's Board of Education.
Major funding also by Novant Health, bringing you world-class technology, clinicians, and care when and where you need it. The Duke Endowment, a private foundation enriching communities in the Carolinas through higher education, health care, rural churches, and children's services. And by Blue Cross and Blue Shield of North Carolina. Who's responsible for rising health care costs? Join us and many others in a candid discussion at letstalkost.com. This edition of Carolina Business Review was recorded November 8, 2013. On this week's program, Dr. Kathy Headley of Clemson University, Dr. Heath Morrison of Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools, and special guest, Bill Kobe, chairman of the North Carolina State Board of Education. And now, here's Chris William.
Thank you and welcome, and thanks for watching our program. Kathy, Heath, good to have you both here and welcome.
Great.
Thanks for having us.
Dr. Morrison, I'm going to start with you. Common Core in North Carolina, now Law of the Land. You got, at least Charlotte Mecklenburg and many, many other communities in North Carolina got their first assessment results. How do you feel about them?
We expected what was going to happen, and so as we've looked at other states, Kentucky, New York, Florida, who have all gone through establishing these higher standards, creating assessments to those higher standards, every one of those states has taken a pretty large drop in terms of the overall number of students hitting proficiency, and so in some cases a 30 or 40-point drop. So we were expecting something very similar in North Carolina. We saw about 30-point drops across the board in districts all across the state. We were heartened in Charlotte Mecklenburg that our proficiency rates actually exceeded the state, and so we were encouraged about that. But it shows the work that needs to be done, and you know, you either have to commit that raising these standards or what we need to do to make sure that when we're sending our students to the university, they're not having to take remedial courses, and it's what we need to do to get kids really ready to be able to look for highly skilled career jobs, or you just continue to do low standards and then feel good when you have those incremental test increases. So this is, we went into it eyes wide open. It was expected, and now we know the work and the benchmarks that have to be established.
Yeah, Dr. Headley, South Carolina has not adopted Common Core, but you're not far from it, I know that. So when you look at, you know, the gap of reality of, at least in North Carolina, the gap of reality in how kids are performing academically and where they, and where they need to be has obviously gotten wider. But when you hear and see what's going on in North Carolina, and when you know this idea of what Common Core is, and this is not meant to be a debate on this program about Common Core, but don't we want our kids to be, number one, more creative, and number two, be better learners instead of just memorizing facts? Is that the direction we're headed here?
It is not at all. In fact, I think one of the strong elements of Common Core is going to be the critical thinking, and that's exactly what we're seeing with, with the results of a change in the curriculum, a change in the assessment. South Carolina has been preparing for this all along too, for several years, and it is this year that we're implementing the standards themselves, and next year we'll have both continued implementation as well as the assessments. So we're on par too, but we know that it's the learning curve there, and a lot of, a lot of impact that'll have on our classrooms, our students and teachers, as well as the combined emphasis that we're going to need from families as well, parents, to be engaged with us because it's going to be a "we're all in" type of initiative for us.
Let's, let's kind of zoom out from the clinical results of Common Core, and let's talk about something a little bit broader, and this is a question for both of you. You know, you can't go in any community, and you know this better than most people, you can't go in any community and not have folks all want better education outcomes.
Correct.
And with so many initiatives and so many programs and so many choices for school now, how do we all talk to each other? Where is the, not just the commonality of having the outcome, but why aren't we talking, Heath, why aren't we talking more to one another about this issue?
Well, I think there's a lot of conversation, and there's a lot of movement. There's been a lot of legislation passed in North Carolina and South Carolina as well. I think what's absolutely certain in terms of looking at polls and surveys of parents is the parents want choices, and that parents want quality choices. And so one of the things that we're doing in Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools is we have as part of our new strategic plan, a focus on having every parent having at least two quality CMS public school choices. So whether it's their commitment to making the local neighborhood school a quality school, whether it's a quality nationally-known magnet program, an alternative type of school, a technology-based virtual school, we've even petitioned the state to allow us to have our own charter schools. We just want to make sure we're having quality, and I think as long as that's always a standard, I do worry sometimes that in this vast array of choices, there's a lot of choices, but there's not quality control, and I think that absolutely has to be part of that conversation.
Well, and Kathy, let me quote something to you. Nick Zese, Secretary of Education in South Carolina, was on this program, and when directly asked about how we fix tactically, how we fix some of these issues that we're talking about, he said, "It's not at all about the money. It's about the administrators, it's about the principals in the school, and it's about the teachers." Do you agree with that blanket statement?
Well, I'll give you an example of what, again, may support his statements and such, and it connects a little bit to the previous question that you had for Heath, and that is, we are having a common conversation, for example, in literacy, and we have an initiative, Read to Succeed, which is really combining higher education as well as with our public schools too, across the board. So we're looking at a P-16, a P-20, and it really from birth, so that we're beginning to talk about the needs for literacy, how it takes us to the workplace, the economic development component. So we are beginning to share that common initiative to bring us together. It's not just about this program or that, but the pathway that we're headed on. So it is about the very best teachers, the very best administrators, but how we can access to, I mean, I think the thing you're going to hear from me as well is going to be the commonalities that we can bring together for our communities, for our parents, as well as our schools and districts. We've got to do it together, and higher ed's a part of that as well.
And I would say, just in response, I would agree with half of that statement. I would agree absolutely. It is the commitment to having quality principals and effective teacher in every classroom. To say that it's not about resources, I think is a little bit overstated. If you're going to have quality teachers, if you're going to have quality principals, and the research shows that the quality of the teacher is the number-one determiner in any school district, in any school, is a great teacher can close and eliminate any achievement gap within three years. But if you're going to have quality, you have to compensate quality, and so what we're seeing in particular our state, over the last decade, we've had the most precipitous fall in teacher salaries in the entire country. And we're now seeing that we're $10,000 below the national average in terms of teacher compensation. We're no longer compensating our teachers for their master's degrees, and that's causing many teachers across the state of North Carolina to rethink about wanting to stay in our state. So, you know, at the end of the day, I hope that as we have these conversations about improving education, I actively work with our legislators, and I believe that that's exactly what they want to do, is to improve the quality of education. I hope that we can make a commitment in the Carolinas to make teaching the iconic profession of our time. We give to our teachers the most precious commodity we have, and that's our children. That's the future. And so why would we not want to make sure that we are compensating and supporting these professionals as they go about the important work of educating our children?
You know, I think that's probably a great place to bring our guest in because a lot of this does morph county lines, state lines, and we're going to ask him that and bring him on in a second. So thank you both. Stay with us, please. Next week on this program, her name is Cheryl Stanton, and Cheryl has had the job for about six months, and the job is the executive director of the Department of Employment and Workforce in South Carolina. And that is the nexus where this whole idea of a high unemployment rate sits, and we're going to talk to Ms. Stanton about that next week. And then in two weeks, a political reporter roundtable. These guys do not hold back, and it'll be very interesting to hear what they say, how they say it, and this, again, has to do with everything around civility and many chats around a political roundtable that have to do with some of our legislative leaders. So that's two weeks. You know, it's been held out that diversity is important. We've heard it over and over again for our guest, career diversity, maybe why he has ascended to such a critical job in the Tar Heel State. His short bio, well, a short look at his bio includes stints in bank administration, a chemical salesman, athletic director for UNC Chapel Hill, one-term congressman, secretary of North Carolina's Department of Environment, Health, and Natural Resources, and chair of the North Carolina Republican Party for a while. Well, now, he leads the North Carolina Board of Education, and we welcome its chairman, our guest, the honorable Bill Kobe. Mr. Chairman, welcome to the program.
Thank you very much, Chris.
You heard the dialogue prior on this program. Mr. Chairman, so when we talk about teachers, let's, let's start there. If we close the gap between what teachers are earning now and what they could be earning commensurate with their counterparts across the nation, would that fix a big part of North Carolina's education problem?
Well, I'm with Dr. Morrison on that. That is certainly a big part of the equation, and I believe our governor, certainly our board, and our General Assembly want to address that, but it'll probably over the next few years be addressed in the context of not just giving salary increases, but hopefully career pathways and different models of educating. So it's a more comprehensive approach. I think we're locked into a salary system and schedule that is, needs total reform. That's my approach.
Do you find legislators, do you find those around those seats of power, understand this and are open to raising teacher pay?
Yes, I think as a group, certainly. They're different people, they come from all walks of life, so they, they have different approaches to, so it's an education process, and it's like Dr. Morrison said, that he's trying to educate his local legislators, and we need to duplicate that all over the state. The state board members, the superintendents need to get with those decision-makers because they're the ones that make the decisions about the direction we're going in, of course, hopefully aligned and working with the governor, and we become the implementers. So there needs to be a lot more collaboration. I think they want to do it right. How it's going to look, I can't tell you, Chris.
Yeah. Heath, question?
I just support the whole concept of the idea of career ladders, looking at strategic compensation. We have a task force right now, a lot of great entrepreneurs in our community, business leaders, civic leaders, helping us rethink how we compensate our teachers. Our board has taken a position, we need to get the entire base up first, but then certainly look at ways that we can reward quality. You know, how do we make sure that those individuals that are bringing the most achievement for our children are compensated and well-respected for what they do? One of the things that we're working on in Charlotte Mecklenburg is something called an opportunity culture. It's very difficult right now with, how can you get every student access to a great teacher? Well, you may not be able to put a great teacher in every classroom, but you can expand the reach of the great teachers so that they can help build the capacity of other teachers. Every student can get access to them through technology, different ways of scheduling, and then we compensate these amazing professionals for the important work that they do.
Do you have a question for Chairman Kobe?
I do. May I? I'm wondering about in the model, and it reflects a little bit, Heath, in what you're saying, are there going to be possibly some incentives? And I'm thinking particularly now about not only recruiting the most effective teachers, but also the retention, and perhaps into areas where some of the most needs are. Are you thinking about any types of thoughts that might be viable for that?
Well, that's, that's a huge question, and we have programs. We're working with Teach for America. We're also have another teaching program, Teacher Core, many things to try to get the placement of, you know, great teachers in the areas, in the rural areas where particularly it's suffering. But if I can say that I didn't know I'd end up in this position, but I'm going to tell you something.
Is that a bad thing or a good thing, by the way?
Well, I bring fresh eyes because I'm not a professional like these folks, but I tell you, I'm so excited because I believe this is the most transformative time in education in my lifetime.
How so? Why do you think that?
I think it's, we have been locked into the industrial age, and we're now in the information age. And when I grew up, and I'm a product of the public school system, teachers were revered. They were, had, there was a high level of respect. Not that they're in respect now, but it's not at that level. And I think with the information age, with bringing on technology and blended educations, the different models of education, we're, and paying them according to their value to our society and the need we have for great teachers, that I think this is going to raise the level of respect of the teaching profession again. So I'm excited about that.
So Chairman, Mr. Chairman, do you think that it's eventually, we are going to get to the point where the teachers will be paid more? And, you know, I don't want to spend the whole program on teacher pay because there's so many other elements, but is, I mean, are we just lagging? Is that where we are?
Well, we're certainly way behind. We're 46th in the nation. It's embarrassing.
Yeah, right.
But we've got to do it as a team and come up with a comprehensive approach. We need immediate salary increases, and I sure hope that our legislature addresses it in the short session, but we need targets to work towards. We need a strategic plan, and I know our governor is looking at what he can recommend to the General Assembly going forward.
You have a question?
I do. One of the things, obviously, that allows you to get great teachers and keep great teachers is not only the compensation, but that they feel rewarded for what they do, respected. And one of the things I hear constantly, and I'm sure, Mr. Chairman, you do as well, is that they're having such a hard time finding the time to teach the amount of testing that we're doing in our state. This is my second year in North Carolina, so much respect for the history of what we've been doing in this state, but I've just never found a state that likes to test as much, and our teachers constantly say, "We don't have time to teach." So our teachers aren't adverse to tests, they want to be held accountable, but what is your opinion about the balance between the amount of testing versus the amount of time our teachers have to teach?
Well, I accept your view of it, Dr. Morrison, and the view of many of your colleagues, your peers across the state, and the governor does.
I know he does.
And that we're way over testing, and we need to ratchet it back, but we need the help of the General Assembly in that area too. So that's the reason why I want these superintendents and local boards to connect, because I have been a legislator, and if you're a legislator, you care most about the people back home and how they feel about the situation, and I think they'll listen to us. I'm optimistic, and I think the future looks great.
Kathy, question?
Well, going back a little bit to, for funding models, I think as you're talking about, and this is an area I would benefit from the expertise here around the table, because I know that we're based on perhaps some older funding models in our states when maybe agriculture was keen and such. And so how are we going to really change our funding models? Certainly, teacher salaries and other educator salaries are part of that, but it's also how we're also supporting resource-wise, our schools and districts. How do we need to look at that differently to make sure that we can do the things that we're going to need to do to, to keep our students ready for the 21st century?
Well, if you talk about funding model, you know, I want to trust the local people. And, you know, if we're not going to have a great advance in resources over time, then we need to give flexibility to how Dr. Morrison and his colleagues or his peers across the state use that money. I, I think we've been caught in this state, of course, with this high, we've, we've used to go through recessions and not have low unemployment. We got hit with low employment. I think we've, we had the third worst unemployment. Now I think we're up to fifth, so we're making progress. But education and economic development is tied at the hip. And we need this state to prosper economically so we can have the resources to invest, and it's almost like a chicken and egg thing.
Yes.
Which, I don't like that, but I'm telling you, Governor McCrory, he's the best at selling this state and attracting business, and Chris, you know the job that he did in Charlotte. So, again, I'm very optimistic that we can raise both our economy and, and have a lot more resources for education, not just K-12, but all education.
You know, let me go back to something that you said, Mr. Kobe. You made the reference that you were a legislator, you were congressional seat for a while. When you see some of, and this is a bit of a one-off, but I want to bring it back to kind of the job that you're trying to do here. When you see some of the dialogue that goes on around the, the lack of civility, and certainly in North Carolina, I think it seems the relationship between state and local governments has never been more of a gap, more acute, when it comes to respect. It seems like the state has wanted to control or the General Assembly or the, you know, the Senate or the House of Representatives, however this works. But how does this all factor in, this, this lack of civility and this lack of public dialogue? How does it all factor into the critical nature of education and how we all seem to agree that education is important, but we've got so many of these other roadblocks getting us to all look in the same direction?
It has. The civility is a problem, and things have gotten highly partisan. And all we have to do, look at Washington, thank goodness, it isn't as highly partisan in Raleigh. I, I see them trying to work together. I think they can work together. As far as the relationship to the local government, again, that's all about communicating and talking to each other, but like you said, this is one-off, but the national scene with gerrymandering of House seats and Senate, Senate becoming a very populist body, it's really, it's not a good scene up there at this point in time.
We have about two minutes left. Question?
I would be interested. I've had the opportunity to have several conversations with the governor, and I know how much he believes in economic development, and we so see the role of K-12 and higher ed in economic development. We've got great partnerships. You were at UNCC earlier today. We've got a new early college starting with them. We have two new middle colleges going on with the community college. We're starting a new advanced manufacturing partnership that's going to help us be an intermodal port here in Charlotte. So the one thing I would ask in terms of the state board, your viewpoint on the accountability framework that's coming. Many of us, we want to be held accountable, we think that's important, but the metrics and that particular accountability, we think are going to make our schools that would be in any other state, A-B schools, maybe C-D schools, and from the perspective of how that's going to help want to keep business in North Carolina and attract new business, what are your thoughts on that?
Great concern. And what you're talking about is the new grading system for schools, the A through F. And yes, I am concerned about the impact on economic development of this grading of our schools, and I hope that the General Assembly will take another look at that. And certainly, I will be trying to speak to them on that issue because I don't think we have it right.
Kathy, quick, quick follow-up.
Well, I just, I think the accountability piece is, is very important, and certainly, I agree with you, it's an important element, and I think in a time of change. So what would you say to, as well, our educators so that as we're embracing new standards, new assessments as well?
And you have about 20 seconds.
How do we give them some pause to feel comfort for the accountability required?
Well, that's a tough question. I think it is about compensation. I think it is about career pathways. I think it is about letting them know all the time that we know what Dr. Morrison said, that it's, the most important piece is the quality teacher.
Mr. Chairman, you got to peel back a lot of layers of that onion. Thank you. We're going to have you back. Please come back. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kathy. Thanks, Heath. Good to see you. Until next week, I'm Chris William. Good night.
Major funding for Carolina Business Review was provided by The Duke Endowment, a private foundation enriching communities in the Carolinas through higher education, health care, rural churches, and children's services. Blue Cross and Blue Shield of North Carolina. Who's responsible for rising health care costs? Join us and many others in a candid discussion at letstalkost.com. Grant Thornton. Operating in more than 100 countries, our tax audit and advisory professionals specialize in helping companies unlock their growth potential. Novant Health. Bringing you world-class technology, clinicians, and care when and where you need it. Sunoco, a global manufacturer of consumer and industrial packaging products and provider of packaging services with more than 300 operations in 35 countries. Blue Cross and Blue Shield of South Carolina. Where health care is changing for the better. Find out how at ahealthysc.tv. And by viewers like you. Thank you. Promotional consideration provided by Business North Carolina Magazine. For more information, visit carolinabusinessreview.com. For more information, visit carolinabusinessreview.com.